Are we, are we good?
That's good.
All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the January 27, 2025, regular meeting of the Township of Montclair Planning Board. In accordance with the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by providing a copy of the notice on the first floor of the municipal building and by sending a copy to the newspaper designated by the township for notices. This meeting is being broadcast live on Channel 34 and is streaming live and will be available on demand on YouTube. This meeting is a quasi-judicial proceeding, meaning the board has powers and procedures resembling a court of law, and we're obligated to objectively determine the facts and draw conclusions from them in order to provide the basis of an official action. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues of what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and the decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Fire exits are to my right, which is your left, and in the back of the room where you entered. And first up is roll call.
Mayor Baskerville.
Present.
Mr. Borshoff.
Here.
Mr. Campbell.
Also here.
Mr. Graham.
Here.
Mr. Inwali.
Here.
Counselor Lockman.
Here.
Mr. Filles, excused. Ms. Willis.
Here.
Mr. Niemann.
Here.
Chair Brodak.
I'm here.
And Mr. Neese.
Mr. Neese is here.
You know, when you say, "Mr. Niemann," I think you're actually saying my name, and then I just shut it off.
But you have such a presence, you don't even need to say here. You're here.
All right, next up, we have approval of minutes from January 6 of this year.
And I received comments from quite a few people with some minor changes to the minutes. I think you're all copied on those changes. So are there any additional changes? Is there a motion to approve as amended?
Motion to approve as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay.
Okay, next up, we have the resolution for application 2833, 509 Park Street. And this is for the extension of the approval.
Any comments on the resolution?
It was brilliant.
With that, I would move to approve it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Okay, we have no old business, so that brings us to new business. Application 2901, 14 Undercliffe, 172 Lloyd Road, Undercliffe Lloyd LLC, for a conceptual review of the major subdivision.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Nice to see everyone. I think I want to start by thanking the board for moving up the starting time to seven o'clock. Very much appreciated by the older folks like me and one of my witnesses.
I'll note that I just barely made it tonight.
Yeah, it does create some logistical problems for people who have to travel a little bit, right, Art?
Yes.
So anyway, Alan Tremulak appearing on behalf of Undercliffe Lloyd LLC. As you indicated, Mr. Chairman, this is an informal or conceptual review of a proposed major subdivision plan for the two properties located at 14 Undercliffe Road and 172 Lloyd Road. These are two adjacent lots, which contain a combined total of approximately 5.6 acres of land. The properties previously contained two large houses, which were removed in 2019, when the owner of the property at that time had planned to replace those structures with a very large new residential building. And for various reasons, that plan did not go forward. And subsequently, we filed an application before this board last year for subdivision approval to subdivide the property into eight lots. The plans that we submitted last year were reviewed by Janice Tally, who, suffice it to say, had some concerns about what we were proposing and suggested that we perhaps go back to the drawing board and take into consideration some of the concerns that she had identified in her review memorandum at that time. And we've done that. We've been working with Mike Petrie and Sean Delaney from Petrie Engineering on this project from the very beginning. They prepared the original fully engineered plans that were submitted. And they have gone, as I said, went back to the drawing board and come up with a couple of concept plans, both providing for seven buildable lots, you know, which we're planning to review and discuss with the board tonight. Now, I know this board, and probably most planning boards, don't get a lot of applications for informal review or concept review, but it's a procedure that's allowed for in the municipal land use law, where any developer can seek informal review of a concept plan for development before actually filing a formal application, or in this case, before filing, you know, formal revised plans. I think it's, I'm just going to read the last sentence of the state statute, because I think it's important. And that says, quote, "The developer shall not be bound by any concept plan for which review is requested, and the planning board shall not be bound by any such review." So it's essentially an informal, non-binding discussion regarding what we're going to present this evening. And our hope is to try to get some sense from the board as to the, you know, viability of what's being proposed, or perhaps what the board would like to see with respect to this property. Because as you can imagine, you know, it's five and a half acres of property, but it's a challenging property to develop, given the fact that it's largely wooded, it's on a steep slope, we've got to put roads in, infrastructure, retaining walls, it's tricky. And consequently, it's a very expensive engineering exercise. And we'd like to, again, try to get some comments, feedback from the board before we proceed to incur some additional very significant engineering expense to come back with a revised major subdivision plan. So I think it's the type of application for those reasons, given the challenges presented, that it's appropriate for this type of review. So what I'd like to do, you know, I'd like to do tonight is going to have Mike Petrie come up and review the conceptual plans that he's prepared, and hopefully, you know, obtain some constructive comments and feedback from the board, so we can figure out the best way to proceed going forward with this project. So having said that, I'd like Mike Petrie to come up. Of course, you all know Mike. And I'm just going to turn it over to Mike to...
Counselor has a question.
Yeah, Mr. Tremulak, just, I don't think neither myself nor the mayor are on the planning board when the proposal from last year was put forward. So I'm just wondering, what are you going from to?
Well, Mike can discuss that.
Oh, you will? Oh, okay.
We filed application, but nothing was presented. There weren't any hearings before the board.
So there was no plan or any cons, nothing was presented last year?
Not to the board. We filed...
Yeah, well, to Janice, yeah.
The full plan that was reviewed by Janice, and in light of her planning comments, in response to that, we went back and took another look at things. But there were no prior proceedings before this board.
To the board, but with respect to what was presented to Janice, is that last year to Ms. Tally, was that very different than what we're seeing here tonight, or?
It was more lots, yeah.
It was more lots.
Yeah, and they, and I think the... Mike can explain how it's changed.
Oh, okay, yeah, thank you.
He has all the answers. I anticipated the questions.
Mr. Petrie, can you grab the microphone behind you? Thank you.
Do you want me to bring the plans up on the computer?
I can do this from here, I think.
And so because this is not a hearing, we don't need to swear, Mr. Petrie, incorrect?
I understand he'll be doing karaoke.
You put up the words, I'll carry the tune, just one of these, I promise. The subject property contains two lots, as Mr. Tremulak indicated, Lot 2, which has the majority of its frontage on Undercliffe Road, and only a small portion of the frontage near the intersection on Lloyd, and Lot 3, which has the major, or has all of its frontage on Lloyd, a little over 201 feet. Lot 2 is approximately 3.08 acres, and Lot 3 is 2.55 acres. There is an existing single-family dwelling, number 160 Lloyd, located immediately to the north of the subject property. And to the west and to the south of the subject property is Eagle Rock Reservation. So we have abutting neighbors here, obviously development across the street, across both streets. Our firm has some history with the property, having prepared the plans that were filed in 1999 and withdrawn before any hearings occurred, I'm sorry, 2019, dating myself, 2019, for a single house on the two properties. The, last year, we filed a major subdivision for eight lots, and I bought a copy of that plan and a copy of the major subdivision plan and the tract improvement plan, because I thought it was important for the board to see this. So we had eight single-family lots with a new road that was somewhat C-shaped, located to a cul-de-sac up at the top of the hill. This property slopes significantly from the reservation down towards, down towards both Lloyd and Undercliffe. Lloyd slopes down to Undercliffe, and Undercliffe is relatively flat along the frontage. For those of you who haven't seen the site, there are walls along both the Undercliffe side and the Lloyd side. There's openings in those walls today for two existing driveways. I just, I'm going to flip back to this for a hot second. There was a driveway that comes from the highest point of Lloyd into Lot 3 that serviced the house that sat up here on the hill. Similarly, there's a driveway that comes through a gate at the, near the intersection, and comes up to a house that sat roughly there in the cleared spot on Lot 2. So the intent...
Mr. Petrie, how high are those walls?
The existing walls along the frontage, I think they vary in height, but I'd say between three and five and a half, six feet.
And what are they comprised of?
They're masonry, stone walls, for the most part. They're, they're different. I'd say the Lloyd, the Lloyd frontage, the wall's a little more rubbly, and the Undercliffe frontage is a little bit more finished cutstone.
I think there's photos of both walls in the planning report that you have.
Yes.
Taken last, photos taken last summer, not this winter.
The development that we looked at with the, with the eight-lot subdivision included a new road that climbed from an elevation of approximately 480 to a high elevation of about 538 in the back. There were a series of tiered retaining walls along the road, both at the lower reach and at the upper reach, because there is a substantial grade difference on the property. One of the concerns raised was the fact that the road was built to RSIS standards, which has a 12% grade allowable on residential streets versus Montclair standards, which has a 10% grade allowable on streets. And the whole purpose of that, obviously, RSIS, a higher standard by the state, but we wanted to reduce the amount of cut as much as we could. It's also had a detention basin in the front that had a series of walls associated with it as well. Janice wrote a memo, and Alan and I both talked to the client and said, perhaps it would be in our best interest to go meet with the planning staff of Montclair, which is what we did before we took it forward. And after that meeting, and at the suggestion, some of the concerns, we went back to look. Simultaneously, and just, I guess maybe right before we made the submittal, Montclair adopted some new regulations. So the zoning regulation stood as 20,000 square foot lots, if I recall right, it was 100-foot frontage. And that was increased to a 150-foot frontage and a 200-foot depth. And it changed...
What's that?
That's, that's what's current, 150-foot lot width and 200-foot lot depth, and a 20,000-square-foot lot. The numbers don't make sense, but that's what the standard is. So what we did is we took those numbers and we applied it to this site and said, if we had to comply with all of those standards, what would it look like? And quite frankly, this is what we came up with. So there's a seven-lot conforming subdivision in your set that was submitted, that includes two lots that front on Undercliffe, a new road that comes in right about where the existing driveway does, but cuts diagonally across the site to create five lots off of that road.
And this is drawing C1-1?
This is C1-1, yes. And, and these lots conform with your newest standards, all lot sizes, all lot depths. The lots vary in size from 24,686 square feet to 39,585 square feet. So they're substantially larger than the 20,000-square-foot requirement, but that is primarily driven by the lot width and lot depth requirements that are contained in the newer regulations. There's about a half an acre of lot that's taken up by roads, and the balance of the seven lots are comprised of varying sizes, as I said. Most of them are about 30,000 square feet or larger. I don't like it.
Have you been to the two lots? Did you get it off?
You'd get it off of Lloyd?
Is there additional?
Or off of Undercliffe? Or you could use the common driveway on Lloyd. I'm going to get into that in a little bit, because I...
Can I just ask, though, on Undercliffe, is there an additional cut in the wall?
I don't want to do that, honestly.
Do what?
I don't want to cut the wall on Undercliffe. I don't think, I don't think that this is the best subdivision for this particular property.
But this layout would require an additional cut?
Yes, it would.
Okay.
Maybe two. We did two, we did one more concept.
One more question. Where are you getting the 150...
The frontage is measured along the required setback. I'm sorry, it's a lot width, and it's measured along the required setback. So we set the lines...
It's measured on the set?
Yes, it's measured on the setback.
Is your microphone on, Mr. Inwali?
Trick or treating. So the setback...
Hey, Tony, 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 we're not picking this up. It's a curved setback, then, it's not at the frontage of the lot. I mean, it's not at the street.
I, it's not at the street frontage, it's at the setback. I think that the ordinance is a little unclear from a word...
Yeah, for retinalized, kind of works, yeah.
From a word of perspective, because it says, "parallel to the street line and in a straight line."
Yeah, so that, I don't see that...
So what does that mean? Does that mean that I come back, the set, required setback, and strike a straight line?
Well, there would be some debate over whether or not this is really a conforming plan, because that's not quite spot on.
Well, I think in the letter, we followed, what we read is the letter of the law, and that's how we came up with it. And quite frankly, I don't want to build this, so I'm, I'll explain why.
But I think the argument's being made that we can do this to conform, so that's why we're going to do the other. So that's the only reason why I'm bringing it up?
I understand.
Okay, thanks.
I understand.
One more question. So what is behind, is there any walls or anything right there? So that's just the park?
That's the reservation.
And there's, and there's no wall that, there, and that's still a slope?
There's, there is...
The park is still sloped, the reservation?
Yes. In the existing condition, there's a wall back up in here, in the rear of what is now Lot 3. There's some, there's some stairs that go up, up the hill, there's some paths that come down the hill, there's some drainage pipes that run through the property, but primarily, it's, a lot of this upper reach here is undisturbed wooded area. And I think, in my opinion, and following what at least I heard from our meeting with the planning department, is their opinion as well, is we want to maintain the steep slopes that are wooded. So what we did is modified this slightly. To continue to create seven lots, but to make those seven lots, some of them are going to have some variances. But what we do is we take the road and we pretty much follow, this is the existing driveway, and we pretty much follow that alignment. We would take these two lots, and we would let them share a common driveway that exists today, that serviced this lot in the, this lot in the past, and let it service these two lots. So we would utilize that same shared driveway concept for these two lots, because this lot, the open area that's on this lot is back in here. The open area on this lot is back in here, and the open area on this lot is in here. So we would have a common driveway that would service lots 2.05 and lots 2.06 off of, off of the cul-de-sac. Why? Because that's the highest elevation that we would get to in our road, is at the cul-de-sac, and these are the highest two lots. There is the ability to build on these existing open spaces and not disturb the steep slopes. Now, one of the things that, that Janice brought up in her letter, in her most recent letter, was, you know, could we, should we be looking at steep slopes, saying those slopes that are greater than 50%? So we mapped that. And what's shown here in red is the slopes that are 50% or greater. But we also mapped those between 33 and 50%, because we thought that was significant enough to, to kind of drive what we're doing and what we're trying to create here. Now, you can look and see that some of the steep slopes happen right along the exist...
What is the red color?
I'm sorry, so the, the red color is that which is 50% or greater, and the tan color is that which is between 33 and 50%.
Do we have, Janice, do we have a definition of what a steep slope is?
Your ordinance doesn't have that in it, to the best of my knowledge.
Is it a zone?
It's, no, it does, actually. If you look in the steep slope code, it's the average grade in excess of 10%.
Oh.
Yeah.
That's not where you...
Yeah.
Which pretty much encompasses the whole town.
Well, no, it's not the whole town, it's pretty steep. I mean, it's 10%, but it's still pretty steep. You only have a foot every, every 10 feet is pretty steep.
I mean, if you've ever gone up a 10% slope or a 12% slope...
Pretty hard.
Yeah. This is 50%, so...
It's like you're going backwards.
It's very steep.
Well, I think...
It's a challenging property, right?
It's absolutely a challenging property, and, and it's a property that's obviously had some development on it. And what we're, what we're looking to do, because I took this, and I took our conceptual subdivision and overlaid it on it, because I thought that is kind of what's driving the bus here, right? How, how would it work? And honestly, there are some changes that I would feel like I wanted to make.
So this is your original subdivision that was submitted?
No, this is the, this is the seven-lot variance subdivision that we have given the board.
And this is the one you'd prefer to build?
Correct. And if, if I may, what we tried to do was say that we could take these two lots and access them off of the existing driveway, coming off into here and coming off into here, in areas that are clearly, by mapping, not as steep. We would cut our new road, and I, it was a good, it was a good process, and we just got the letter last week, but I think there are changes that I would make to this, to this plan. I try to flatten this, this road a little bit to get it more in line here, but ultimately, it comes up through here, and it probably needs to stop a little shorter, which is probably going to give me at least one more lot with, lot width variance, because I'm not going to have the length of cul-de-sac to get me what I need. But I think it's worthy, worthy, because if I were to do that, you can see, developable area, developable area, developable area, developable area, developable area, developable area, developable area. And I think, I think we have the layout generally right to work with the areas that are open in the lot. As I said, I already want to make a couple of tweaks, I want to pull this down a little bit as best I can. I'm limited, because RSIS says that I need to have a minimum 100-foot radius on, on the street, and I need to provide a turnaround. But if I shorten that turnaround and get it out of this slope, I think we can, we may be able to do a little bit better. But that little bit better is probably going to drive another lot width variance. This plan has two lot width variances and one lot depth variance.
What are the sizes of those lots, Mike? Do they all meet the 20,000-square-foot minimum?
Yeah.
Lot area requirement?
The smallest lot you're looking at here is 25,451 square feet, and they go up to 37,659 square feet. So these are all well above the minimum lot standards. These are more focused on, on trying to comply with the lot width and the lot depth requirements that came into play, I'd say, within the last year, 18 months, something like that.
If I may just clarify a question, would your intention be to not disturb those slopes that are highlighted in red and orange?
I think, I think we're going to have some minimal disturbance on them, because we can't build a road without it.
Right, aside from the main accessway.
The road has some, the road has some restrictions geometrically speaking. I mean, we have to, there are certain grades that we have to meet. Montclair's is 10%, as I said, RSIS is 12%. There's a width to the right-of-way, and there's a way, a way you have to grade the right-of-way, so that, you know, you have, you have the cartway, and then you have the sidewalk area or utility area beyond that. And generally, that has to be graded in a fashion that, that allows for that to be utilized by the general public. So there's going to be, there's going to be grading to the width of this right-of-way in whatever alignment we take. But it does appear as if we may be able to move this a little bit down and catch a little bit more of this area rather than that area, and shorten this up, and maybe reduce our impact up there as well.
Is the cul-de-sac road, that's a two-way road?
Yes. That is a standard 50-foot right-of-way and a standard 50, a 40-foot bulb on the, on the pavement and 50-foot radius on the, the right-of-way itself. That's standard design for Montclair.
And it has to be that way? You can't just put a road in with all the driveways off it, for maybe safety reasons with fire trucks or something?
The answer is, we, we would have to, and Niberto will correct me if you think I'm wrong, we would have to get a waiver from the RSIS standards in order to do that, in order to deviate from that. There, there is an option in RSIS to allow for private roads servicing up to four, four individual homes. It's not a, not a common thing, but that would create a little bit different situation.
So that's not a private road?
This, this would be a public road.
Oh.
It's designed as a public road.
Why?
Because it services five lots, for one thing. Because it services five lots, for one thing.
Oh, just, yeah.
And because, you know, that's our limit, our RSIS limit is four. This can be a private driveway servicing two lots. I, I don't know if I can get a driveway off of Lloyd and a private road to service the balance, the other four units. I don't know if I can pull that off. I'll try, if that's a recommendation, or a suggestion. We can look at... We can look at it. But, um, I think getting into this lot, um, you know, straight up the hill is, is going to be difficult.
Mike, I have a question. I mean, the, the steepest, sorry. Steepest part of the property is where that driveway is on Lloyd Road, where all the red is.
In here.
That's, yeah. What, couldn't you have one road to serve the entire subdivision where it's less steep over by where that existing driveway is at the corner of, under Cliff and Lloyd? And have that, wouldn't that create a, a lot less cut-and-fill and have one road serving the entire property?
The answer is, uh, great idea precluded by RSIS standards. We're, we're not offset from the intersection sufficiently at this location to put in a public road.
Even if it's pre-existing?
It's a driveway today.
Right. But, oh, so to change it to a road.
So, a common driveway, yes. A private road perhaps, but a public road, can't.
I see.
How far would it have to be setback from the intersection?
It's 100, 150 feet, center line to center line. So, it, um, it would literally have to move to, I did this before, it would literally have to move somewhere up in here, right into where this, this steep area is. It's, that's coming this way.
Could you do that and hug the bottom side of the colored area, the steeper slope?
The, the answer is, again, we have, these are RSIS restrictions. Minimum 100-foot radius.
Mm-hmm.
So, Montclair says, come in off of it as close to tangent as you can. RSIS says, minimum 100-foot radius. This is 100-foot radius. So, if I, if I come in here somewhere and I turn, I use that same turn, I'm coming right through this, right through this mess. That's the first thing I looked at when I did it. I was like, all right, that's where I want to go. I want to come down in here.
But, so you would need a waiver from the RSIS to say, instead of having 150 feet, make it 125 feet? If it comes up with a better design, that, the planning board has the ability to grant that kind of waiver?
Yes, that is correct. And, and-
What?
The, the center line radius is 100. The offset from the, from the intersection is 150. So, you know, and, and the other alternative is to perhaps consider doing, come off of this driveway with three lots.
Yeah.
And come off of this driveway with the balance of the, the other four lots, and say, I'm going to do it with two private, private roads. I'm, I'm not, I'm not adverse to that, um, but then we're dealing with lots that don't have frontage on a public street. You know, this configuration is based upon frontage on a public street. A less intrusive way of doing this is to build private, private roads or common drives. Again, we now take that 28-foot wide standard, and we take it down to 16 or 18 feet where you could pass two cars. And it's, and it's, it's private property. The municipality doesn't maintain it.
And, and Mike, the other issue with the design that I reviewed originally, where you actually had this, the, the roads and the, and the walls and the retaining walls, is the amount of retaining walls and the terracing. Does this still require those very large retaining walls where this road is being shown?
The answer is, it will, any design we do, any, any full roadway that we do is going to have to have retaining walls. Um, they can be on the private properties, but it's going to have to have-
But they're still really large. And they were, I believe that there are variants, there were required variances for the size of the retaining walls.
Yes. They were, in, in the original design that was submitted to the board, and it was one of the things that we discussed at the meeting, that there were up to four walls that were up to six feet each.
Though, somewhere seven, I thought.
Yeah, somewhere seven.
Yeah.
Uh, so up to, so up to seven feet each, I'm sorry. So, you know, 26, 28 feet of wall at the, at the worst-case scenario. But yeah, it's, it's what was necessary to meet the roadway grades. And again, might be another reason for us to look at a plan that has, you know, private roads or shared driveways rather than, um, rather than a public road. It's, it's, it's a different approach, but I think it's going to be a heck of a lot more environmentally friendly.
So, that was my question. So, with that large driveway, you know, this is a probably, or whatever, road, um, there's a lot of impervious surface there.
Yes.
How do you, and we're on a steep slope that probably has a lot of water runoff.
Yes.
So, are you contemplating that when you're coming up with your design here?
Oh, yeah. Our orig- our original design had, had a substantial area for basin, and it was in one of the steepest parts of the property. We were going to build it with walls. In a, in a different, let's say, in a, in a private drive type of design, we would have detention on individual lots rather than, um, probably massive basins that would service the whole development. Um, it's, again, it's a different approach. It's not your standard cookie cutter subdivision that this board, you know, may have looked at in the past, but it may be a better option.
So, yeah, sorry. So, RSI standards are just that, they don't contemplate necessarily a topography like this. So, why don't we just toss out their standards and build what you think is the best thing to build in this? And then, you know, and see where does that get us? Rather than, and then we would go for, you'd go for variances from that. Is that off the wall?
Well, no, I just think part of it is the seven-foot retaining walls are part of that, right? And, uh, things like, um, I believe this requires a variance for green, um, infrastructure, correct? For the water?
Again, depending upon how we do it, it may or it may not. And we can, we can incorporate green infrastructure.
How would that be possible? What would that require?
We, we can do dry wells on the individual lots and take all the roof leaders. That's, that's green infrastructure. I, I, we've done a fair amount of soils testing in the upper reach of the property where the original mansion was going to go. We did test pits, we did borings, we even did geothermal investigation, because that house was supposed to include all of that. So, I have, we do have a lot of soils information on the upper reach. I don't have as much on the lower reaching property.
But it could be accomplished with this number of subdivided lots?
Yes.
With seven lots?
Yes.
Okay.
The one thing I would just mention is, um, regarding green infrastructure, in my experience, um, the DEP doesn't consider dry wells as green infrastructure anymore, because that's a structural, um, a structural method. They look as far as green infrastructure is concerned, they look to more non-structural methods, bioswells, rain gardens. Permeable paving is considered green infrastructure method. I think that's something you're going to look to explore.
Well, perme- permeable pavement is also limited in terms of the grade that, on which you can build it.
Right. I'm not necessarily talking about the, the road itself. I'm talking more about, you know, the private areas. There's patios contemplated or whatever.
Absolutely.
Um, it's going to be challenging.
It is.
For sure.
There's, there's no doubt in my mind that this is going to be a challenging site, and it's one of the reasons that we're here. Because quite honestly, um, you know, we, we submitted, you know, Mr. Tremblak keeps commenting about my fees and hell. It's a lot of engineering, it's a lot of engineering, it's a lot of engineering.
Your fees are high, just a lot of work.
Nah, I know. I'm just breaking your joke. But, you know, but it is. It's, there's, there's a lot of work, um, there's a lot of work that goes into the design process. The original submittal that we made had a, had a surface detention basin associated with it. It was one of the first things that the planning department said, are you kidding? You're going to put that there? No. So, you know, look, we, we take it seriously. That's why, and the client takes it seriously. That's why we literally took those plans and threw them in the garbage and started all over again, because we, you know, we didn't, you know, we don't want to come in here and, you know, and have to fight tooth and nail for everything that, that we want to do. We'd like to come in with a development that makes sense for this property and that makes sense for this town at this location. These aren't going to be little lots in any way, shape, form, or manner. These are, these are going to be good-sized lots, oversized lots, uh, in terms of, in terms of their area. Some of them are going to have absolutely magnificent views. But they're, but it's a great neighborhood. It's a great area. It backs up and sides up to the reservation. There's not a lot more you could ask for, you know, when you're, when you're looking for, you know, um, a place, a place to raise your kids.
So, Mike- I think it might be good to put this in the context of, this is what, RO zoning?
It, yes.
Okay. So, most of the zoning in town, you've got houses on streets. Do we have a development anywhere in town where there's houses built off of a private street?
Yes. Couple of them, at least three. Fessler, Cutler, I think it is, or one near Llewellyn, and the other one is Braymore. Those are private streets. Or not developments, they're just houses that are-
But there's also over by, what is it, Mountainside Place?
Oh, that terrace, is it?
Mountainside Terrace.
Yeah, yeah. So, there's four at least.
Was that a private road as well?
Only at the end.
No question of it. Okay. So, how would this, um-
Is Christopher Court?
It's public.
Private as well?
What is?
Which one?
It's public.
Christopher Court?
Yeah.
You live there?
That's public?
That's public?
I live there.
Yeah. So, I have a question about that. So, I, I, maybe I missed this in your presentation, but is there a preference for public road going through it rather than having private lots?
I'm getting at it.
Private, oh, you're getting, oh, so can I get that?
So, put this, let's just try to put this in the, you have RO zoning, and now you've got a couple of private roads that could be into a subdivision. How does that fit within the context of RO zoning? And how do you figure out what are variances and not when we're measuring off of public streets and there's certain standards? And maybe the other stuff that, where we've got these private roads, it kind of pre-existed. This is a new development being considered, so fit that in the box of RO. Like, where are the frontages measured from? It's all private. Is this a condominium complex? Is it, is this one, one parcel with subleases? I'm just trying to think of the league, you know, what is the-
I would think that what we, my office would do it is even if it's on a private road and they all would need variances, every lot would need a variance for not having frontage on a public road, but you still look at the lots as they apply to our zoning standards. You don't throw out the zone standards and the lot width and the lot depth requirements just because it's on a private road.
Okay.
The thing you have to think about is, even if it's a private road, we still have to get fire trucks up there, right?
Yes.
We still have to provide public services, garbage pickup.
Well, can you?
That's a question?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we still serve.
I know, we went through a few more.
Yeah. Yeah, so we, we still serve private roads for pickup and plow.
We just don't, we just don't maintain the roads.
That's the question. We don't maintain the roads, but we pick up, we do the snow and we do the garbage and whatever else.
Right.
Seems funny we don't maintain the roads, given all that, but, whatever.
Okay. So, I'm still, so, so that, we're, we're talking about all that stuff and the town being responsible for that on a 16-foot wide road?
Well, they can-
I can see, I mean, I-
It's probably going to be 18 to 20, because the fire department, most fire departments want 18.
18?
16 had been the standard for years, but most fire officials are pushing for 18.
How wide are the existing roads?
The existing driveways?
Yeah.
Uh, they vary, but they're probably about 10 to 12 today. So, to get them to 20 is going to take some grading.
I was going to say, what, what you don't see there is the amount of cut in those steep slope areas to put the road in. It's, what I see is the white part, but how wide is that? That's 10 feet?
Yeah.
So, if this is a subdivision, everything on both, it would be a minimum 28 feet, 18 feet, right? If it's a, if it's a public road.
If it's a public road, it, the pavement width is probably 28 feet, and the cart, and the, the right-of-way width is 50.
Right.
So, that's, that's what this pink line here represents. That's the right-of-way width. So, it doesn't matter where you move that right-of-way if it's a public road.
I guess we can't see the pink, I don't see it over here. It's really hard.
Folks can feel free to-
Yeah.
-go up closer if they'd like.
There.
Um, yeah, I, I-
Maybe, maybe if you pa, if you pass it around to the board members-
Yep.
Maybe the board members can see how much cut, and I was, we were really concerned about the cut-and-fill, and that's why this analysis really helps.
Now, just, as you're passing that around, um, I believe you have two elevations marked on the plan, one at the base of the new road with-
Yes.
With Lloyd, with Lloyd Road, it says 480, I believe?
Yes.
And then at the top of the cul-de-sac, uh, it's four-
525.
525. That's proposed grades?
Yeah, those are approximate.
Approximate.
What we're trying to do is give the board an idea as to where it's going. So, basically, this is the right-of-way width. I'm offering the way around. And these pink lines here are the right-of-way width, and this is the cul-de-sac. So, the area within there has to be graded, like, a standard roadway cross-section says from here to here, there's the pavement, and then the, the area outside of it is graded 2% just as a pavement. So, so that's pretty flat going across. It, it may vary this way, but in, in cross-section, if you took, you cut through this road here, from there to there would be pretty flat.
What about the right-of-way? Is that, is there any-
That's the whole right-of-way. This is, this is the right-of-way.
Oh, sorry, what?
The cartway would be in, in, in here.
I see.
Basically, a standard, a standard cross-
What's, what's the other line that's beyond the pink line?
This is the setback line.
Setback line, great.
That's the required setback line.
Okay.
Along, along the road. So, that's what this dashed line is here. That's the setback line. So, we can't build to the street side of that without variance.
So, okay.
So, parallel to the right-of-way line, there's a setback line. So, this is the front setback between the right-of-way and this line, you can't build your house. You can build a driveway, but you can't build your house. So, that's what that's all about.
So, Mike, do you think there's rock under that, under those portions?
Yeah, I was going to get to that. You said you did some geotech?
Yeah. We, we actually did a fair amount of test pits over here, and we, in, as I said, in the upper reach, in these areas up here-
But that's the upper reach. What about down by the-
This is the low, the lower reach, because it goes downhill. So, um, in the upper reach, we did, we did a lot of geotechnical investigation, because they were doing subterranean garages, they were doing, um, geothermal work, so some of our borings go maybe 40, 50 feet deep up here. But I don't have that information down here.
Did you encounter rock up there?
Um, we had limited encounter, limited places where we encountered rock. Um, we had some pretty good soils. It, but it's this-
What about groundwater?
Um, I don't remember. I don't, we, we, we were pretty good, though. I mean, as I said, they were building subterranean garages, so we, we looked at that kind of stuff up in here. I don't have that down.
I mean, I just did some rough calc, and it looks like from the 525 elevation, um, I think you're going to need to probably excavate at least a good 15 feet.
Yeah. Oh, in, in, in here, we're probably-
And that's even worse. And that's even worse.
Yeah, it's, it's worse down the bottom.
Right.
So, with this roadway design, what's the height of the retaining walls? Total height?
I haven't, we haven't graded the whole thing out, but I'm, I'm not going to suggest that it's, it's going to be dramatically different. I mean, unless we grade back the whole property. We can do that, but I think.
What do you mean? It won't be dramatically different?
Different from what we originally designed and submitted, which had walls, which had up to four tiered walls.
What do you mean, four tiered walls?
Okay, let me go back.
Like, the terrace? Is that what it means?
It's like a series of terraces?
Yeah, okay.
With, you know, six to seven foot high retaining walls, roughly?
Right. So on this design, and this road follows a reasonably similar approach down the bottom, it's, it's, it's a little bit, I think it's a little bit higher, we might be able to pull it a little bit this way, but we had four walls here, from the bottom of the wall at, I'm going to take somewhere in here, it was about 28 feet to the top of the wall. Now, if we grade this lot back, we can probably eliminate some walls. And, you know, we're just going to disturb more area in grading it back. In here, not so bad. In here, it would be bad, because this area is nicely wooded, again, relatively steep, and we'd like to see if we can keep, we can keep some of this, so I, I probably want to do what I needed to do to keep the wooded area here. We have a neighbor right here, so rather than let them look across, I'd want to try to keep this, this area wooded and undisturbed.
And where does the current driveway, current, where does it run?
It runs about like this, in here.
Okay.
And then, then it comes up this way into here.
How, and you said it's about 10 feet, you said?
Yeah, it's about 10 feet wide.
About 10 feet, okay.
That's the, that's the mindset of the, of the private, of the private road idea, because it, you could follow that existing alignment, and yes, you know, you're going to move earth on both sides, but when you go back to look at the steep slopes for a second, you know, this, this slope along here and this slope along here is part of the construction of that drive. I mean, you created that slope when you, when you flattened that driveway, you know? You cut over here, you filled over here, and, and so you did that. You're going to do it again. You're just going to make it wider. But you, you really limit it because you could say, I'm just going to work within the, you know, within the areas immediately of budding the existing driveway. I don't have the, I don't have the restrictions of minimum turning radii for RSIS, I don't have the restrictions of, of grade limitations to the, to the extent that you do on, on, on a public road. I just, my opinion is just a better idea, a better design.
My concern is, this design still calls for 28-foot tall retaining walls.
It prob, it, it probably, probably does. If, if we do it, it's probably going to have walls, yes. Is it going to be 28 feet of walls?
And, and if you, if you used, if you worked with the contour of the property and put the entrance, you have an entrance drive closer to Lloyd where the grades are not so steep, there's a little bit, but I think that you have stairs there. You could tie it in and have it work with the, with the contours and require a lot less cut and fill and a lot less large retaining walls.
Okay. But, the elevation here in the street is 480.
Right.
The elevation here in the street is 462. So to get from 462 up to 525, and as Nuberto pointed out, that's probably 15 feet of cut, you know, you're, you, now you've got to go up, you know, from, from a lower elevation
Right.
By 15, 20 feet. It's just, it's tough. It's, I wish there was an easy solution.
Now, just maybe premature to ask, but, why not? Have you reached out to any utility companies yet about servicing the site? Have they expressed any issue, concern?
We, we have not. I mean, clearly, we're not concerned with getting, you know, with getting sanitary down the hill, that's going to be easy. You know, water, water up the hill, you know, electric, electric and gas, they're, they're going to come in to service the property because they get to fill them forever. I'm not, yeah, I think the, you know, the houses here had public water, so I think it can get that high and still have sufficient pressure. But I have not checked with any of the utility companies yet, because I don't have what they need me to give them yet, so.
I figured, just, thank you.
No, it's good. Good question.
There's a plan that is on the town website dated May of '24. Is that the one that was all graded? It doesn't look quite like that, it has a little bit more of a, more of an aggressive loop. That might be what Janice is looking at?
Does it look like that?
That, that's it. Okay, so that's the one with the, with the pond?
Eight lots. Eight lots.
And that's the pond right there?
Detention pond.
Got it, all right.
Right here at the surface.
All right, so that's, that's rearview mirror at that point.
Yeah, I, I, in talking to the planning department as a whole, the clear indication was, don't be a fool.
So if you, I mean, I don't know what the developer's, like, purpose in life is. Are they home builders, or they? I mean, are they home, I mean, because this is sort of like one of these sites that you got to be, we really got to be serious about what you're doing here, because it's really hard.
Yes.
And, so, do they have the experience to pull this off? Is anyone from the developer here?
Yes.
Have they built other subdivisions? I wouldn't mind hearing about that.
Is the owner and the developer the same thing?
No.
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 Why don't you introduce yourself to the board, tell them who you are?
Hello, everybody, Adam DiMillo from Avanti Enterprises. I am one of the members on the LLC.
Mr. DiMillo, is the green light on, on that microphone?
Yes.
Do you mind speaking a little closer to it?
Sure.
What is your name again? I didn't.
Adam DiMillo.
Okay.
Yes. I'm here today to, to kind of like overview of everything. I'm not the builder on, just want to let everybody know, I'm not the builder on the site. I'm one of the project managers that I'm going to be maintaining and, and reviewing and looking over the site, to make sure on a day-to-day basis that everything gets done accordingly. So, I don't know what question you have in the developing.
The entity.
I'll help you as many as I can.
The entity, what is the experience of the entity in building out subdivisions and homes?
So, every one of the entities that are going to be hired on there are?
Not contractors, I'm talking about the ownership entity.
The ownership entity?
Yeah, what, what experience does the ownership entity have, like Hovnanian builds homes?
Right.
Like, what has this entity done?
So one of the owners that, to answer your question, one of the owners on the LLC is very experienced in commercial development. They have built multifamilies, ground-up construction for commercial properties. Do you know Mel's address at his, at his office? Do you know his office address? Is it Bluefield?
Yeah, Broad Acres.
Broad Acres? Broad Acres is one of the development sites that he has built.
Can I ask you a question?
It's a big development.
Just to do with that, has this property changed hands since it was, the original owner bought the two houses?
No, it hasn't changed hands.
So it's the same owner that?
Not yet, yeah.
Not yet?
Is it, is the applicant, like, the contract purchaser?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, thank you.
How, how large are the homes planned for? What, how, how many square feet would the homes be?
So it's a good question. I sat with the local Coldwell banker in Montclair, and we reviewed some of the styles that we're going to maintain, the blend, exact blend of Montclair, the footprint, as well as the style. They're ranging from anywhere from 45 to 6,500 square feet.
Ms. Willis, did you have a question?
Well, I think you see my face this thing. I have a question.
What more, I saw your light on.
Yes. Well, my concern basically is, I'm trying to figure out the houses that, there are two houses now that are there. Is that correct?
They were torn down, 2019.
They were torn down since 2019.
Okay. What is the complexity of what is to replace them compared to what was there? I'm trying to figure out the feasibility of how more complicated is what you're asking to replace that with.
It's a good question. I can take that if you want.
Go, give it a shot. I was in both houses, so I know what they look like.
The houses were substantially larger, 10,000 to 12,000 square feet each, I believe those houses were, roughly. So our footprint would be a lot smaller, so to answer your question, it would, on our side as a project management team, the building structure would be significantly easier than what's, was currently there. And I'll just touch.
On that lot, though, what about on the, because each lot is unique, right? So, would it be significantly easier on each lot to build compared to the homes that had been there and were torn down?
Yes, I believe so.
So even with the grading difference, even with the grading differences in the?
Right, so the build itself going vertical is not a problem, the horizontal development is where the issue is, is, is.
I don't think we're getting.
It's very complicated.
If you can speak into the microphone, that way we'll get you.
Or if you prefer to stand, you could stand at the lectern.
You can use that lectern as well.
You can sit, you can stand, your choice, just make sure the green light's on and speak into the mic.
Okay, good.
So, so just, did you say to answer that question again?
I didn't ask it.
Oh, I hate asking.
Maybe just double-check the green lights on, because as soon as the door opens, that usually means.
You'd said the vertical.
There you go.
You'd said the vertical build was not your concern, it was the horizontal build.
Correct, the horizontal, and that's what's at question, and, you know, that's why we're here in front of the board, so we can get your feedback on the, the horizontal build. The horizontal build is the infrastructure part. It's cutting into the roads, it's cutting, it's the sewer, the water detention system, the retaining walls, all that. The horizontal is, is where the, is where the challenge is. I wouldn't say difficulty, but where the challenge is.
But some of the homes would be built on steep slope lots, correct? And that would require things like the retaining walls we were discussing, it would require, I mean, the ordinance says that one of the goals is to preserve and maximize the most appropriate use of the natural terrain and recognition of environmental constraints. So you'd have to consider the environmental impact of each lot as well, correct?
Absolutely, and we took that into consideration with my infrastructure team. We will be able to utilize a lot of the existing rock that we're going to be cutting up there to build the retaining walls, so we can use natural stone, keep it environmentally friendly. And to circle back to your original question, it all depends on which project and which plan is going to be approved in regard to the retaining walls. Now, to Janice's point, in the beginning, those retaining walls were very large. We tried to make them, butter them up a little bit, by splitting them, decorating them, you know, with a lot of trees and shrubbage, make them beautiful, instead of just one big wall. But as the plans improved and as we got the knowledge from the board, we were able to minimize a lot of those, those walls, which makes the site a lot more appealing to the eye.
And that is one of, as you can tell, one of our primary concerns is the retaining walls, among others. So, I guess I just have, along that line of questioning, one more thing to ask. I mean, we saw in the planning report things like the fish pond, and there was certain unique terrain there. Are, are those environmental sites being taken into account? Or is it really just placing the homes, I guess, where they make the most sense, given the setbacks? Or are you considering some of those natural environmental conditions?
Yeah, I, I believe the, the fish pond that you're referring to was a man-made small koi pond.
Do you know when that was man-made?
I, I saw it when it was, when it was still functional, because there was a, a bluestone patio that surrounded it. It was kind of built into the bluestone patio, so it was man-made before, I, I would say probably before 2010.
But it wouldn't be a historic structure, right? So one of the questions I also had was, 2019, the homes were demolished before the demo ordinance took effect, and the HPC didn't have an opportunity to review. So, I know the homes were, I mean, ones from 1865, I believe, right? One from 1908. Were there other historic structures on the site, and are they still on the site that might need review and preservation?
The answer is, you know, I, I, I know, I know the koi pond that you're talking about, I know the, the patios that you're talking about. I don't think they were historic, they were, they were dry-laid bluestone. The bluestone was destroyed by the.
Demolition.
Destruction equipment. I was trying to salvage the bluestone, I was trying to negotiate with the owner to salvage the bluestone before it was destroyed, and that didn't happen.
Was that a 14 Lloyd Road you're talking about?
Actually, no, that was, that was the Undercliff property. This, this property has.
The one, right, there, that's, that's 14 Lloyd.
That's 14 Undercliff.
Undercliff, Undercliff, yeah, I was in that house. I had good friends that owned that house, I was in there quite often, it was a beautiful house. And they built a lot of that external patios and retaining walls there.
Gorgeous.
Yeah, so they did that.
They did the kitchen, too, it was breathtaking.
Yeah.
It had the biggest island, I think, I've ever seen in my life. Out of stone.
It's like a morgue. You could put a body on it. It's like a slab.
They did, they did hire a renovation company to come in and take that kitchen out and all of the appliances, and they resold it.
That's the new owner did that.
Yeah.
Yeah, the old owner.
Before they demolished it, but it was still, the, the bluestone, the bluestone itself was heartbreaking to me. I, I love that look.
Yeah, I just know they paid a lot of money for it. That much, I know.
Whatever. The other, the other house was not in as good a shape, it was a lot more deteriorated, but it had the, the, the old, I think they were all chestnut moldings that were, that were beautiful.
Yeah.
Really beautiful.
And there's a wall behind there, correct?
Yeah, there's, there's a wall back here that's still standing. I thought there was a, a garage or a shed somewhere on the.
There's some outbuildings, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I think that's something I would like the developer to take into consideration as well. Whatever is remaining to see, if it's worth preserving, there have been other, you know, subdivisions done in town where they've considered retaining things, structures, not necessarily buildings, I mean, those are also historic and worthy of preservation. So I think that should be taken into consideration as well, with where the homes are, are placed.
Yes, we're also going to take into consideration of the frontage, the stone wall that's in front.
Absolutely, I forgot to mention that as well.
Yeah, that's something that we're preserving, we're going to maintain, make it beautiful again.
Yeah.
There's also a walking path, there's steps that climb up that mountain, that are, you know, they're covered with, with foliage and everything right now, the stairs are falling apart. And we were asked to make that great again and go up the steps and have access to that reserve. So the public can have access to the reserve, as well as the new development can have access to that reserve as a walking path. And I think that would make a good highlighted point.
Okay, and I would, I would ask that the Historic Preservation Commission have an opportunity to review the site as well, and have a, see if there are other structures worth preserving.
Yeah, I would like to say that these, these two buildings probably would not have been allowed to be demolished.
No, they never would have been.
Today, so there's a lot of ill-feeling about them in the community.
I just wanted to let you know, I didn't take them down. Just, I got in the project.
Fair enough.
No.
And there was no prohibition for them. I realize.
That it kind of prompted, yeah, very soon, in the middle of the night, they were demolished.
Nobody did anything illegal. It would be illegal today.
They got permits. Yeah, it was done, yeah, full permits, yeah.
So, so Mike, getting back to the 28-foot retaining walls, is there any way, if you reduce the height on the uphill side so that you don't have to have, and, and grade it so you don't have to have a 28, make it a more gentle grade going up slope?
The answer is yes, you can do that. You're grading more of the property, I, I think, I was, I was trying to avoid that in here, but I have no problem doing that in here.
Right.
But, you know, we'll, we'll look at that.
I don't think we have 28-foot retaining walls anywhere in Montclair, so.
Well.
Even with its terrace, I mean, it's.
They're tiered.
Seven by seven by seven by seven.
Yep.
But they're really close together.
I, I, I understand, I listened.
Yeah.
And I said I don't want to bring that plan in. It's really why I'd prefer to, to come in here and do either a private road or shared driveways, because I think it's going to be better for this particular site. I just, I just do.
So there would be, if you did a, if you did a private road, you wouldn't, it would be narrower, it'd be less cut and fill. You would not need a 28-foot retaining wall.
Exactly, exactly the point.
Right, and we can use some of the natural rock as well.
To get to what I think, I, I understand your thought process, and I understand what you're thinking, and I 100% agree with you. The only way I can do that is do private roads or common driveways. And I think that is, you know, yeah, can we do this? Yeah. Are we gonna bang heads again over retaining walls? Yeah. Would it be better for us to look at this as, as a private road? Yeah, but I don't know how often this board has had, has had the opportunity to consider that. And I don't want to design it and find out what I do, so.
I don't think in the 14 years I've been in here, in the, I don't know, five years
What's the disadvantage?
We've never, even when I was, before, when I was on the planning board, we had nothing like this.
So why would we not, you know, this is the site, it's an unusual, you know, site. Why would we not try to let them do the best that they can, and if that's private roads, let's, why would there be a prohibition against it, or why do people seem reluctant to, to want to do that? I don't get it.
I think that's why we're here tonight.
What, yeah.
Because if they do this as a public road, there's significant concern. So they're basically saying, if you, um, the, the only alternative to reduce the impact is to do it as private.
Yeah.
You clearly would have to meet with, if you want to go in that direction, meet with the, uh, the fire department,
Mm-hmm.
because they would have to serve this.
Yep, understood.
But this is the first, the first point is to, to see how you, to gauge your feel for a private road.
And where, you said you've just, you've never done a subdivision with a private road, and that's
Oh, no, I, no, I meant, we've never done a subdivision on slopes like this
Yeah.
with a public road.
With a public road.
Yeah.
Okay.
Either, we haven't done it with a private road either.
We haven't done it at all.
So this is, this is, this is new territory for Montclair over the past 20 years. We've never seen anything like this.
Yeah, but they build on everything, and it certainly can be done.
What's the disadvantage of going private? Well, like, what are we, you know, you're clearly, the maintenance is not, I mean, that's in your hands, not ours, you know, in theory, so that's less of an issue.
Exactly, look, but, um, the, the reason that we ask the question is because there are municipalities who would rather say no than say, we'll accept a private road if it's the better design for, you know, a subdivision in, on this particular lot.
Doesn't that public, uh, still have responsibility for servicing that private road?
There, there are services that the municipality will still provide.
Police, fire.
Police, fire, garbage.
Right.
But
Plowing.
But you're not
I don't think plow, wasn't that
They do near, no, they do on Braymore.
We do plow, we do plow, yeah.
They just don't maintain them.
Right.
Correct, they don't, you have a pothole, they do nothing.
The town isn't responsible for, you know, potholes, for pavement replacement, uh, all of those things are private.
How does the town regulate that if it's a private road?
Um,
It still has to be maintained at a satisfactory level.
No, that was a problem with Braymore. The owners came to us and said, you've got to pave this road, and we said, we don't, it's a private road, too bad. But we tried to get them a good deal, because they were doing paving on the, the public streets. We got them a quote, but they didn't do it, so.
That's the little section of Braymore.
Braymore, that goes up from, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
That's the downside. Yeah, the, yeah, the downside is, um, you know, you're probably, if, if the maintenance is not performed by the homeowners, there's probably homeowners that are complaining about the lack of maintenance.
Yeah.
And where's the recourse? There's, there isn't any.
And you've got to tax the
It's all internal.
You've still got to tax it as though it's receiving the services it's receiving.
Yeah.
It sounds a little complicated to make that a private entity
Carol, I can't
Responsibility.
Is your
It's on, but I'm not speaking into it, so that would help.
Okay.
Thank you. It sounds a little complicated to make it a private entity, and yet still be accountable for all of the responsibilities that we have to do for citizens of the town.
It's, it, I understand what you're saying, um, but, but look at your, your townhouse developments, your condo developments. Those are all done on private, private drives, private access. Everything internal to those is private. It's not, it's not any different than that.
For, for example, we have, um, Carriage Way, right off of South Mountain.
Yep.
Which starts public for like the first hundred feet, and then when it goes into the, those condos or townhouse development, that section is, is private, and I don't know how many units they have, but it's obviously several, probably, you know, at least 10, 15 units.
There's more private roads in town than you would think. Like Gates Terrace, for example, comes in on Briar Hill Road, which is right near where I live. Um, you know, they're scattered around.
Would you anticipate creating some sort of association for the maintenance of the road, or would it be within each individual deed, or, or this three that share a road, and the four that share a road, it's structured within that?
It, it would be exactly like that. So if there's, if there's a road, if there's a private road that services these five lots, then those five lots would have the responsibility for the road, and they'd probably have to be a, uh, an association established.
We would create a homeowners association.
Okay, yeah.
With easements and requirements, and if they want, they could even make contributions.
Yeah.
You know, to go towards maintenance.
And a kid who wants to go to school, what happens there?
Pardon me?
Well, a child who wants to go to the public school.
Well, that wouldn't have any effect on the child.
Are you asking about the bus pickup, like, uh, yeah? Would the buses take them off on private road? That would depend on district policies and how far a kid has to walk.
Right.
Yeah.
Most likely, they would walk at the turn to the bottom of the
Yeah, that would be my guess.
Right, there's a bus pickup, actually, I was there the other day, there's a bus pickup right on the corner of Lloyd and Undercliff. That's where they stop.
So, sorry, would you put the roads into a common element? Or would there just be structured within the deeds, individual rights and obligations? I just know, there's, in another town, there's a private road that somehow came to the responsibility of only one person. And so there are people who live on the other side of that person's, uh, portion of the property that have a lot of issues, and so I'm just
The, you would either put the road in an easement, or you would create a right-of-way along the road, um, that may be the width of the pavement plus two or three feet outside of that pavement, um, for maintenance purposes. Um, we've done it, we've done it both ways. Um, we just, I just did the review with the board in Essex Fells of a similar situation where they came in with a public road, and I talked them into a private road, because I thought it was a better alternative for that particular property. Um, and
How many lots?
Hmm?
How many lots was that?
Four. So, it was a four-lot subdivision, they, they came in for five, and I said, if you do four, you can do a private road, and I would support that, because I think it's better for this particular property, and they did it that way.
Karen, what about the Aubrey Lewis property? Is that a private road?
That was public.
Public?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I knew they had a homeowners association set up, whatever.
That was for the stormwater.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, just for my own notification, I know for the individual properties for stormwater, you would have to make sure that it's, um, making up for the new impervious coverage. Does that account for either a public or a private road? Do you have to make up or try to accommodate the added flow from either of those?
Good question, and the answer is yes, in both instances, public and private, we still have. Montclair's, first of all, this is in the steep slope section of Montclair, so there's regulations for stormwater that govern the steep slope section, and everything that gets developed. If I built, if I went and built one house on each of these lots,
Yeah.
Niberto would still review it for, for stormwater management.
I know the houses, I wasn't sure about the roadways and whether they had
Yes, all, all impervious coverage is subject to the same regulatory review.
One more question. How are you handling affordable housing on the lots?
We'd have to provide one out of five.
So one out of five of those houses is
Actually, no, no, because there's a minimum, it doesn't, there's a minimum density to when it, when it applies. Okay, because this doesn't meet the minimum density of our affordable housing ordinance, it doesn't apply, you'd be paying the fee, the development fee.
Just the development fee, we'd not have to provide
Yeah, there's a minimum density in our, in our affordable housing ordinance.
So what is it?
This doesn't meet the, the density requirement for our 20% set aside to apply.
So it's not just the count of housing?
It's not the count, it's also a minimum dense, and I don't know off the top of my head what that density is, but I did look at it when it was, uh, eight lots previously, it didn't apply. So with seven lots, it still doesn't apply.
I wasn't aware that there was a density, I thought it was just the count.
No.
Yeah. And so what was, you would pay the in lieu of?
They pay the development fee.
The development fee, which is
Which is the percentage for each lot, for each house.
Oh, the development, what is that?
For each house.
Do you know what that fee is?
It's one and a half percent of the value of each la, of each house.
The value of the house, the construction value?
Yeah, so the, the way it would work is, um, because this is greenfield and it's new, there are not previously existing improvements.
Mm-hmm.
Basically, the assessor determines at the, each town handles it differently, but essentially, at the end, the assessor determines the value of the property that's been constructed. Um, and then they add in the value of the land for, for the pre-existing property, and then it's, I think, like Janice said, 1.5% of that value. So if it was a $2 million house, you're paying 1.5% of that $2 million into the affordable housing.
Is that $300,000?
No, that'd be
Thirty thousand.
Thirty.
Thirty.
And I, usually, it's the assessor's office that handles that, but I'm not sure what Montclair
The assessor's office handles. It'd be $30,000 times what
Seven.
However many, assuming it's a $2 million
Yeah, yeah.
House and land.
Well, assuming, yeah, yeah, yeah. And is that, does that fee, I mean, we just talked about the in lieu of fee being in the same thing for years. Has the 1.5% gone up recently, or how long?
It's, it's just a percent, the 1.5% is the same. It's just what goes up is the, the valuation.
The cost, yeah, yeah, but it's always 1.5%.
It's always 1.5%. I think that's dictated by state law.
Is it?
Yeah. Of the home, not the property value. No, the total, so if it was, if they were doing improvements on a pre-existing improved site, you would only account for the improvements done.
Yeah.
And improvements in this context is any building. Um, because they demoed the prior house, and it's now vacant land, they're doing on the whole of the property. And, yeah, the residential development fee, which this is, I believe it's an opt-in, municipalities can choose to adopt, but I believe it is limited to 1.5%.
Yeah.
Which value are we talking about? Are we talking about the tax assessed value, the appraised value, or the construction value?
That's equalized assessed.
Yeah, the equalized assessed.
So it's basically market value.
Understood.
Put that in your pro forma. We're letting you off easy, 1.5%, we're letting you off easy.
So it's more, so I guess we gotta go towards a 6,500 square foot home.
Or you can always offer to build an affordable housing unit on one of those lots.
I'm sure the board would smile at that.
You wouldn't say no.
The only problem is, as soon as they get in and get hit with $60,000 a year in taxes, they probably won't be able to afford it no more.
Affordable, no, no, they get, they get reduced.
No. They would reduce that for that, for the individual?
Absolutely, if it's deed restricted affordable housing, the taxes are reduced.
That's something to consider.
There you go.
Um, I've got, I'm gonna take it back to the streets again, so if we do private streets What?
Taking it to the streets.
Taking it to the streets, sorry about that, yeah, I'm humorless, I'm gonna talk about streets. So, we do a private street, and there is, um, chapter 297 in the code, in our code, right, Streets and sidewalks, and it talks about stuff that you have to do, private streets and streets in new developments. It doesn't say the street width, but it says, "Construction of all curbed sidewalks, driveway aprons, any private street or on streets of any new development shall be subject to the same regulations and must comply in all respects with the regulations governing streets, um, the title of which is vested in the township." So, this doesn't say the, 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 the street width, but I think before we assume that we can build a narrower street, I mean, that's, that's what I would do if I were you guys. I'd say, what is the argument to make these streets less, um, adequate or less compliant than a new street? So, it doesn't say the width, but it says, "Everything else has to be the same as other streets." So I think if I were you guys, I'd say, okay, how am I gonna come to this board and explain that all this other stuff that the town needs to do, or that the residents need to do, will be safe, um, on this lesser street? Now, those are two driveways, they wouldn't call those things streets that were there, right? So if you, they were just driveways to a house. So, you just have one owner, they just kind of drive in and drive out, but when there's multi, I mean, I think, I would sort of concentrate there first, because that's a hurdle that you'll need to get through, I think. And then the other stuff with, you know, the frontages and the lot areas and, you know, um, so maybe, maybe that, and then if you want to go in that direction, then you say, okay, like, like those two lots down front, the, the existing driveway bisects them, so how, how do you put, you know, I guess there'll be new lots then, right? Because if that, if you're using the, you know, the essential lesser grade of that, you'd have to figure out, well, where am I gonna put my lots now?
That really helps if you, when you show the building envelope.
Yeah, I, I understand that, and, and that's where we have to get to, what I was, what I'm Look, when we did this, we looked at, you know, from a practical perspective, where can we build on these properties? You know, because you've got a lot here that's got a lot of steep slopes, but back here, you've got area. Back in here, you've got area. Back in here, you've got area. So, again, as I said, kind of a common driveway that comes in, that could service these lots and get everybody to where they're going without disturbing the steep slopes, and still get you a reasonable, buildable area for that, for those homes. You know, in here. In here, in here, in here. So you use this driveway to get to this house, to get to this house. You come in up to here to get to this house, even though its frontage is down here.
Yeah, so then when you do that, you kind of set your houses in, and hopefully that will minimize the, the walls. Then you say, okay, where can I take less trees down? Because this is all wooded, there's, you know, thousands of trees probably on this property. So then you say, okay, if I put my house closer to where the new road is, I don't need a 50-foot front yard, because the backyard, I'm gonna save all these trees. So, front yards, you're gonna have to be taking out trees. So maybe there's a trade-off where you say, okay, these houses will be slightly closer because of this reason. No one's gonna see them unless they're visiting someone up there. This, this is not gonna be, it's not, like it's on Grove Street or something. So, maybe the front yard is really less, um, important at that point when the trade-off is saving a forest back there. And you get, so maybe one objective is minimize the cut and fill, or the cut and fill, and then maximize the tree preservation.
Exactly, exactly the point of private road.
Yeah.
Because this is, look, we've got a mass of trees here, a mass of trees here, a mass of trees here, and a mass of trees back here. And if we can
You tuck your houses in
If we can do something more creative like this, and these little circles that I put on there are all in areas that are open disturbed areas today. So, this is
And then you think about, let's say I'm building this in Vale, I'm building this in some sea area, you know, and they don't just have streets that look like Montclair streets and areas like that out in Colorado or someplace, and so you think about, I don't know, you tuck the houses in, and you do the least damage possible to the land.
Except I think you probably want to maximize the view of those upper houses. I mean, I know from my friend's house, you could see New York. Even that's the first one, the lowest on the left-hand side. Yeah, she could see New York, so you want, you don't want trees in front of those houses, trees that are in somebody else's backyard blocking your view, right?
But, but the trees that are along here?
Yeah.
Were there?
I know, no, you could, right, right, I'm not saying those ones.
And you're right, it was magnificent.
Yeah, I'm just saying
And from up on, up on the hill on this one, similarly, it, it was just beautiful. I mean, you, you looked through the trees in this house?
Mm-hmm.
Because there's a lot down in here, but it, yeah, it's nice.
The other question is, you're gonna have all underground electric utilities, and that's doable, no problem?
Yeah, I, I don't think the PS will service anybody anymore without
Not underground, okay.
Yeah, in a new development, they don't, they only do it underground.
So if you're here for a major subdivision, how do you guarantee that these are the only, the areas you've drawn on this figure, you know, plus or minus whatever you come up with, how do you guarantee that those are the only places somebody could build?
Well, it's a great question. This board has the ability to impose reasonable conditions, that's what the law says. And I'm not playing lawyer, because I don't want to be one, and everybody would hate me. Um, but from a practical perspective, we could develop a plan with reasonable footprints in an overall, and, and the board can and has in other instances, say, you're gonna be bound by what you put on this drawing. Um, in fact, not too long ago, in a recently adopted revised resolution, there were similar conditions set forth.
So you, you would plan to come to us with these outlined a little bit more in detail?
I have no problem doing that.
I think, I think it'd be helpful, and I think showing, you know, the wooded areas on this figure as well, so we can see steep slopes, wooded figures, uh, sorry, not technically steep slopes, but your 30%, 50%, and the wooded areas, I think it'd be helpful for us to visualize where those development pads, I'll call them, would be.
If, if I'm coming in for a subdivision with private roads, I need to give this board every board everything that it needs in order to say yes to the variances that we would require. I get that. And that might be a little bit more work than even what Mr. Trambulak was speaking of before, but maybe it's not all engineering, maybe some of it's architectural. So, I think that, that if, you know, if this is the route, and I, I believe it's the right route, as a designer, I believe this is the right way to go for this particular property. And I, I, I don't, I don't take that responsibility lightly, I'm, I'm not a stranger to this municipality. I, when I come back, I don't wanna be berated for what, for selling the, the board a pick and a poke. If I don't think it's gonna be better, I won't bring it to you.
Is the proposed new owner, right, you wanna buy this, are you just doing the engineering work and then selling off the lots, or are you actually building the houses that will be on this?
Our company will be building the houses that are gonna be on there, and then selling off the lots.
Yeah, okay, but you're actually doing, you're not selling off...
Selling the finished product.
Selling the finished product.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, thoughts from the board, or board engineer?
Yeah, I'm, I'm still trying to figure out this complexity of how do we make sure that the streets are lit, and the garbage is picked up, and all of those things that are private now, if you make it a private street, and the safety issues, and the fire, and all of that. I, I'm not quite sure how that operates, as long as we are ensuring that everything that we would've done, if it were a public street, must be done. I'm not sure how we work out those details, but I'm not totally adverse to it, I just would need to hear more, I guess that's the issue.
I understand, and I, what I can, what I can tell you is that, that you're in really good hands, because your board professionals are both excellent at what they do, and Mr. Hernandez is going to review everything that we submit, he's going to make sure that he agrees with the grading that we've shown on the road, the lighting that we've shown on the road, the radius that we've shown on the road, and yes, we will go to the fire official before we come, before we even make submitted to the board, make sure that the fire official is on board with the access, because I think that's, you know, that was a comment that was thrown out a half hour ago, and Mr. Trambulak wrote it down, because that's his job, so.
We'll also, we'll also do a fire hygiene pressure test, because we usually do that for our development, fire hygiene pressure test, make sure there's significant pressure to get up to those houses.
Isn't there a water tank in, that comes down, though?
It's, it's even better, right? If the water comes, if, if there's one above us, that we can come down.
And it's over by Wachang.
Yeah.
I don't, there's, there's, I don't think there's a water tank over here, is there?
Not, not the reservation.
Not at the reservation?
Yeah, this is Eagle Rock.
The Cedar Grove.
Briar Hill and Murray Street over there, there's a, so, isn't that a pump station? Do you know where I mean, Roberto?
I think there is a pump station up there, because... It's not sewer, water.
Not in, not in Eagle Rock.
It's off Briar Hill. You'd only be looking for lot depth and lot width variances for these. If we do private roads, we're going to, we're going to be looking for lots without frontage on a public street. So that, but that, that would be the third. That's another variance, yes. Any other types of variances you could predict at this point, if you, if you do the variance route? If we do the private road route, that is, though, I think the, the bigger obstacle is, is that whole no frontage on a public street. I've tried to, to be creative in that before, but I, you just get, you just get silly-looking lot lines, just to get somebody a little bit of frontage, I don't think it's worthwhile.
So you'll use the, pardon, the existing accessways, right? You won't create a new dri, you've got two driveways there right now.
We have two driveways, we try to use those two driveways exclusively. Widen them as we need to. Whether, you know, one gets two lots or three lots, and the other gets, you know, four lots or five lots, I'm not sure yet, but it's according to how we can work out grades.
I mean, I think you got the sense that, you know, we'd, we'd like to see, is the least amount of disturbance possible, understanding, you know, you're within your rights to develop this property.
The least amount of walls possible.
Least amount of walls.
I heard that at least three times from the right side of the table.
Yep, yep. So I, I think you've heard, you know, a lot of, a lot of the board's thoughts on this, it does seem that folks are more favorable to the private road aspect rather than the public road.
This, this was, in my opinion, a very worthwhile time spent, and, and I'd like to thank the board for your input, because I think it's, it's a lot better for my client to hear your thoughts from you than it is to just hear them from me, so.
And I'll paraphrase what Mr. Trambulak said at the beginning of this, neither the applicant nor the board is bound by any of the comments here, this is just an informal conceptual review.
Good, good way to finish up.
Appreciate everybody's time.
Sure. Mr. Trambulak, are you all set?
This has been very helpful, yeah, thank you for your feedback, and we hope to come back with something that's workable.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for your time, everyone.
Of course. Do we have any committee reports?
We have some draft ordinances.
Ah.
That are on the agenda. There's two draft ordinances, which I did not send to the zoning subcommittee, we just kinda sent it to the full board. One is a simple change to the accessory dwelling unit regulations. One of the issues we've had with the ADU applications that have come to my office is that our limitations on accessory structures, which is 24 feet on any side, precludes the ability for a garage or a detached structure to meet the 800-square-foot maximum size for an ADU. The ADUs, it basically constrains the ability for ADUs to be created. So, the proposal is to increase the size of a detached structure used for an ADU in the R1 and the R2 zone districts from 24 feet to 30 feet, which will give a little bit more flexibility to achieve that 800-square-foot maximum. You can't even achieve that 800 square feet if you keep it at 24 feet.
Janice, could you remind us of what the height is for an accessory, what is the height?
16 feet.
16?
Yeah.
And that's measured to the midpoint of the peak, or the...
To the ridge.
To right to the ridge, okay.
To the ridge, yeah, it's very flat, so these would be very small, modest structures.
Yeah, my only comment on that one would be to add a parenthetical after 30 feet in any direction, just say length, width, in parentheses.
Okay, it's 30 feet, right, so it's not, so it's, you're not, so you're not going vertical.
Well, you're not going also diagonally, too, so it's just clear that it's gonna be...
Okay.
A lot of codes, I just, because I was just kinda curious, I think our previous one had it that way, but it's assumed that someone's gonna build something rectangular, so if you say length, width, after that.
It says 30 feet in any one direction.
And just say parenthetical length, comma, width.
Length or width. Okay. Not down, yep. So are there any other comments about this proposed ordinance, uh, change to our ADU ordinance? Okay, make a motion to, do we do? A motion to, okay, is there a motion to recommend this change to the council?
Some.
Some.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. I can't, I can't hear you. Excuse me?
Can an ADU, sorry, can an ADU have a basement? Can we go down?
Well, we don't preclude it, but the maximum size is 800 feet, square feet, so if you get that 800 square...
Yeah. Because they're not living, yeah, there's not a, not a bedroom, it's not living space.
Well, it's below grade, below grade would matter more than the use, and so...
Yeah.
Does the square footage definition in the ADU ordinance account for square footage above grade, or does it?
That, that question has never come up.
I know, I know, talk it up to me, but do we, do we...
It's a, it's a good thought.
And I, and actually, I don't think we've act, we have not had any applicant, to my knowledge, applications for a detached ADU that goes, that's below grade.
They're thinking of creative ideas for...
But it's also restricted, right?
Digging into the ground, it's very expensive.
Yeah.
It's, it's a restricted piece of legislation, so that's, you know, a lot more applicants.
So that's, 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 that's an issue that hasn't been a problem.
All right, we shall see.
Okay. And the other, the other ordinance change is with clarification of the definition of basement, this came from the Board of Adjustment, and it clarifies when they are evaluating additions and new construction, when a basement is actually considered a story. Because as you can imagine, on the side of, of a hill, if you have a basement that's over 50, of certain size, when you view it, it looks like another story. So it just clarifies when it's calculated as a story, as opposed to just a basement. So are there any questions?
Does it take average grade? How, how is that, I'm sorry, I missed that. It has to be 50% below ground or something?
At least 50% of the basement floor area is above ground.
50% of the basement floor area? Oh.
No, the basement floor area above 50%, right, like it is gonna above grade, but not 50% of the basement floor.
I apologize.
Or 50% above grade, the entire floor.
The volume of the, the volume of the basement, 50%?
A basement shall be considered as a story above mean grade, where at least 50% of the basement floor area is above grade.
Well, it's always below grade, or floor, the floor area is always below grade, because it's, right?
Not always.
Not if it's like a walkout basement.
But even if it's just a slate.
I wouldn't wanna make this more complicated.
Well, no.
Because this is, this is the language that they, that they, that they recommended we put in the ordinance, to make their jobs easier.
So, but what is 50% of the floor area?
I think it's simply 50% of the basement floor area, if it's, is above grade. So, if 50%, if you know where the, the great corner, the, the grade should be measured at the corners of the basement level, and if at least 50% of the floor area, well, you, you know, length times width, is above, above grade, then it's considered a, they considered a, a story.
So if you had a basement, there's a hill, and the basement floor is above grade?
Right.
50%?
That'd be a walkout basement.
Yeah, right.
That's a walkout basement.
When the back end of the house is on the low end of the hill, sometimes the basement can walk right into the, have a nice entrance, entrance on the back.
I'm thinking about the floor, though.
The floor, the basement.
What will the floor ever be higher, the basement floor ever be higher than the grade?
When it's, well, it always has a foundation.
Oh.
Right, and you put, you build the foundation, if it's a walkout basement, it's gonna be above the grade.
It's only about the hillside of the floor, it's just about the side of the land that it's on, right?
But I think where Tony's going, I think I see where Tony's going, right? If you have a grade like this, and your walkout basement is here, I mean, where does your, your floor area would have to come out to here?
Yeah.
In order for 50%? Because otherwise, in most walkout basements, and sorry, so we can see a visual, it's at the low point of the hill.
It's all below, it's all...
And so all of the basement floor area is gonna be below grade.
So, that's why I think it really means volume, not, because I remember that, to be, for years and years, a basement is when 50% of the volume of the basement space is below grade. Because if you draw a line, let's say if your grade line goes across, let's say your, your basement's 10 feet high by 100 feet wide, you draw a diagonal.
Right.
One side of it comes out at grade, one side of it's completely buried, okay? That is 50%, the volume is 50% below grade, but not the basement floor area.
How about I send this back to the zoning board?
Yes, we, we know the people who wrote it.
They're the ones, they're the ones, they're the ones who recommended this language. Let's take it back to them and say, "We don't think it works," okay? Yeah, I think that's the easiest thing, because we actually don't deal with it at this board. They're the ones who are dealing with it, and you make a point, I see, I see your point. Send it back to them?
Yeah.
And... Yeah. Okay? All right. And that's, that's all that I had, except for paying the bills. I don't have any other committee reports, we are, I don't have any committee reports.
Okay.
I do wanna ask, before we get to, I don't know if anybody had any problems downloading the, the documents for tonight's meeting, we changed the process by creating a shared drive?
I was unable to download them on the shared drive, but I was able to get them through the website. So, I don't know if that shared drive issue can be fixed.
I sent it to IT.
Yeah.
And IT said, "Janice, you've got Michael Graham's email address, and it was sent to your email address, that's how you responded to..."
Yeah, I used, oh, like, three emails I have, and it didn't work. So if we can, if, if I can contact them, I'll, I'll, I'll communicate with you offline on that.
I mean, we're doing it with the Historic Preservation Commission, too, so that everything's gonna be on the Shared Point, because evidently, it's easier to have, like, the minutes there and the agenda there. We still post the agenda online, but I'm not, there're not gonna be attachments to the emails, just go to the Shared Point Drive.
And they'll still be available, though, through the website moving forward, or only on the shared? Well, they'd have to be available to the public.
We're always, we're always gonna have, the application materials will always be on the website.
And we're always getting hard copies.
And you still get hard copies.
Yeah.
Do you update the SharePoint? And then so, how far in advance is the meeting?
Okay, that's an excellent point, I don't know if you heard what Mike Artz said, "Do I update the SharePoint Drive?" Well, what I did is for, for the upcoming meetings, I'm storing, I'm putting the documents there. So I have next week's meeting, we've canceled, so there's nothing there, but the meeting at the end of the month, I think I put the draft agenda there, I'll probably go back and change it if, you know, as, as things change, but I'm trying to put the draft documents there, and the application documents, I will load those up as things come in, probably closer to the meeting, so I'm only doing it once. But I also created some new files on the Shared Point Drives. I had been requested by some board members to provide reading material on affordable housing. It's all there on the Shared Point Drive, there's a folder there, housing documents, all of the housing reports that I've used to, to prepare my reports to you in the past, and that I'm incorporating into the housing element of your share plan, are stored there. So if you wanna do some extra reading on missing middle housing, or naturally occurring affordable housing, or whatever, it's all there. The reports from the joint, the Harvard Center for Housing Studies, I get reports from them every couple of weeks, I'm putting that there, so if you wanna educate yourself a little bit more, and also some APA reports, American Planning Association, are there. So that's the, the, the benefit of having the Shared Point Drive, is I can park things there, so you can take a look at it. I also have received a report from a consultant hired by the township through a grant to do a resiliency plan, and part of this grant to do this resiliency plan is updating our climate change-related hazard vulnerability assessment. And they sent me a very extensive changes to that section of our land use plan. So, I put, I put that there, if you wanna take a look at the, the reports that they did, and all the mapping that they did, and it's just draft. I have a meeting with them scheduled, because I have some questions about all of those maps that they made, but I'm just sharing it with you so that you know what's going on. We're not at, we have to have a staff-level review of that, I asked them to schedule a meeting to come to the planning board, to talk about the climate change-related hazard vulnerability assessment analysis that they did, and I think we have a date in March, when they're available to, to attend, so.
Janice, I have a question about that, so with President Trump's executive order, where he's ordering certain things not to be paid, does that fall into that category? The, the climate change, he's kind of, he's focused on environmental...
The climate change, he's kind of, he's focused on environmental stuff, for that grants will not be distributed until he takes a look at what's going on?
I don't know.
I mean, because there's a sense that, should we proceed with something if we think the grant's not going to be paid?
I don't know.
Yeah.
I mean, I think we, we already have a contract.
We have a contract, but we haven't made a payment. They've done work, I guess.
I don't know. I'm not, that's not a, a grant that I'm managing, so I don't, I don't really, I know that we have a contract. I believe it's through the state of New Jersey. So I think that they're-
Well, I wonder how the funnel-down thing is if-
So I don't think we're-
If it's from the state, you're not going to have the same issues.
I don't think we're going to have the issue-
Well, if the state is funded by the federal government, then you would have the same-
But the state has made a budget, that's coming out of their budget, that's already budgeted.
It's already budgeted.
It's kind of like the CLG grants. It's already, it's already there, so they've done the work.
But it is something to watch out for.
But also, yeah, I agree, but they've already done the work.
I know, they need to be paid, yeah. But it is going to be a problem, I think, going forward.
You're absolutely right. But I'm not concerned about that particular grant.
Okay, good. The second thing, I was wondering if you could refer in your SharePoint Drive, where we could look at the affordable housing, so I can, I really wasn't aware that the density also comes into play, in addition to 20%.
Well, that's, that's just the affordable housing ordinance? That's in our existing ordinance right now. Yeah. I can, I can just send you-
But that's fine, I can find it.
Highlight the section of our ordinance where it has, there's a, I think the density is a minimum of six units per acre, and this doesn't meet that requirement.
Okay, sure.
So.
Janice, you have the Stormwater Committee that was started and then stopped. How does that relate to the resiliency study? Because a lot of it must be dealing with stormwater. Is that Stormwater Committee going to meet, or?
Well, there is no meetings of the Stormwater Committee. We hired this consultant to do this resiliency plan. I didn't even know when we had this, that they were going to redo our climate, our, our climate change-related hazard vulnerability assessment, but that was part of their contract. And I was like, oh, you rewrote this. I said, we have to bring the planning board in. What they did is they took what we, remember, we wrote that, and we spent a year, but it was really, we had to get that-
It was stormwater.
We were like the fir, one of the first towns to adopt that, because we couldn't adopt the, any redevelopment plans unless we had that plan, that in our, in our master plan. So now we've got engineers, planners and engineers. This is Collier's Engineering took our plan and added an engineering, I don't know if you've seen it yet. Okay. They took an engineering spin, and they added all this data at the state level. Areas where they did a heat map for Montclair, and I think it's this data that's now available from DEP, heat map, areas that are vulnerable to mudslides, you name it, it's in there. So there's a lot of maps. So, when you have a grant, they did a very, they used it to do a very extensive analysis of where we need to focus our resiliency efforts.
Did they take a look at the infrastructure, the public war, the-
They, well, no. I mean, I know what you're saying. Our issue was the lack of information and a complete stormwater plan. The end results-
Very high-level stuff.
The end, yes, it was, the end result is, once we do the resiliency plan, we will then be able to, to file, apply for grants, or we were able to apply for grants to make the infrastructure improvements. But we need to, and, and DEP is, is now reviewing this, our climate change-related hazard vulnerability assessment.
That's a mouthful.
When we did it, there was no DEP review. But now there's a DEP review, and they're like, well, you need all this other stuff. So that's kind of where we are. And I think in March is when we'll have a workshop meeting with you. It's not going to be a public hearing. I want to get, you know, share it with you. It's, it's on the Shared Drive right now. I have a lot of questions, so I'm hoping that before it come, before March comes around, we'll be able to make some modifications to it, clarify it a little bit. But that's, that's just one, you know, that that's coming. In addition to the housing plan, we're also going to be working on that.
Thank you.
Okay? And then we have bills.
Bills.
Should we pay them?
I was going to question this 2024 bill, but our distinguished counselor was so complimentary of the resolution recently drafted, that I will make a motion to approve the bills.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Have a good night, everyone.